Welcome everybody to the Latuna Fire Post Fire Pre Storm Mitigation Town Hall Meeting. My name is Eric Baumgartner, I'm the Emergency Management Coordinator for the City of Burbank Fire Department. So I wear two roles or wear two hats for the city. So I serve as the Emergency Management Coordinator for the Burbank Fire Department, but I also serve as the Emergency Manager for the city. So with that, I've brought together a group of professionals who are subject matter experts to talk to you today about some of the stuff for mitigation and some of the things that we've been doing in the city already for pre-storm mitigation after the fires. We're going to have a couple presentations, a couple speakers will give a couple PowerPoint presentations, and then a couple presentations from city departments on what they're doing and stuff for you in the future, and then we'll open it up to questions and answers. So to begin, I'm going to go over and give you a little quick PowerPoint presentation on things that the city has already done to prepare for an emergency within storm-related issues or something like that with the fire. So what we've done already, taken so far, before the fire was even 100% contained, the City of Burbank Public Works and Emergency Management actually started surveying the hillside and started looking at where are there going to be potential impacts. So before the fire was even declared 100% contained on that Friday following the holiday weekend, we were already out there looking at areas, starting to identify what the trouble areas were going to be and what we should start doing to lean forward in a posture to prepare for that. In addition, LA County Public Works began reconnaissance of the hillside and the watershed management areas and started looking at what the effect was on the watershed and how that was going to impact homeowners as well as our neighborhoods up there. Shortly after the fire was actually declared contained, a multi-agency burn area emergency response task force was created. Normally, we'd actually have what's called a bear team, a burn area emergency response team. However, this year, there were so many fires that actually burned in the state of California, all of the actual certified bear teams were already deployed by the time our fire actually occurred. So a bear task force was put together. So these were members that are already trained and qualified on a bear team, however, not part of one of the teams that were deployed, and so we put them together to augment just for the Latuna Fire. This task force included the three cities that were involved, the City of Burbank, Glendale, and City of Los Angeles. We also had LA County Fire Department's Forestry Division, who was there with subject matter experts regarding the forestry aspect of the hillside and landscaping, as well as LA County Public Works with the watershed management. We also had the US Department of Agriculture with their National Resource Conservation Agency, and also the National Weather Service. So this task force was established so we could start looking at what is the potential for this coming year for the three cities, what are the impacts, and what can we start to do to lean forward and prepare for that. In addition, we stood up a dedicated page called readyburbank.org/latuna. So that page is already up and running. You can go to that and we'll keep updating that as we have more information throughout the year for you to look at and research. And then Burbank formed a multi-agency, multi-discipline, post-fire, storm mitigation task force. So the City of Burbank, we leaned forward even one step further than that bear team, and we brought together our city departments that have a role in either preparing for, responding to, or recovering from any type of related incident that would be storm-related or anything with our vegetation up on the hillside, mud, debris, or any of that type of stuff. And then LA County provided post-fire mitigation advice. So after they completed their reconnaissance, they actually went around and actually started preparing residents by giving them post-fire mitigation advice. And with that, I'm going to actually turn this over now to LA County Public Works. So we are represented for LA County Public Works. Mike is going to come up here and he's going to actually explain some of the post mitigation, post-fire mitigation efforts that took place and what they did up on the hillside with
Thank you, Eric. I appreciate the intro. Folks, I want you to always have our contact information. My name is Michael Miranda, I go by Mike. My direct line of the office is area code 626-458-6164. And our response, the county of Los Angeles' response to the fire, we used about 40 engineers and technicians to sprawl over the 7,000 cubic yards, sorry, the 7,000 acres of the perimeter. And there were so many properties that were affected, we literally knocked on about 560 properties and went, you know, door to door. And of that number, roughly 100 were in the City of Burbank. And of that 100, we offered advice either in writing or verbal, if it was something that was fairly simple like sandbags and plastic sheeting. So we really sprawled over the whole perimeter and it took quite a number of weeks from Labor Day weekend till about the first week of November. I want to say by mid-November, we were just about done with the first and second waves of our approach. So if anybody feels like we missed their property or have additional questions, you know, don't hesitate. We have and we will make ourselves available to the City of Burbank's residents, and it's just a phone call away in a simple time, and usually we could get out there and see you in a day or two, which is fairly typical. All right, I'll start with our presentation. Basically, I am here, or the county is here because of Flood Control District. Many of you would see your tax bill and there'll be a flood control assessment. You basically pay for the flood control services, and that's why we are here. And, you know, we're not going to charge any resident our time. Typically, the time is half an hour, maybe a little bit shorter, maybe sometimes 45 minutes. But we like to engage with the property owners and ask some questions that are of relative importance to us, and I'll get into some of those questions. Of course, we want to take the perimeter from the fire department's incident command, and we'll actually kind of fine-tune it a little bit, and we'll use Google Maps and anything that's at our disposal, and we'll come up with, in this case, a tremendous number of properties or rooftops that we feel could be potentially impacted. From that perimeter, we will determine and create burned area maps. These burned area maps are available now online, and also there are phase maps, and I'll get into the two different types. The burned area maps basically quantitatively tell you how many cubic yards you might experience in a certain scenario, and I'll get through the three scenarios that we have with the county of Los Angeles. Then also with the burned area maps are the footprints. The footprints are what we would anticipate the mud flow and the debris flow would travel and settle. It's not so much the water, it is really the debris flow that we're concerned about. A lot of folks now have smartphones, and the last big event in the local area was the station fire. There's a couple of videos on YouTube that show large amounts of material coming down Ocean View Boulevard in La Cañada, and, you know, that is a reality that could happen in any one number of streets between here and the City of Los Angeles. So I just want you to be aware that I want everybody to take this seriously, have an evacuation plan, and, you know, just understand that it's, it might be a little bit conservative at times, but we're really looking out for your safety and well-being of you and your We also have debris mitigation measures. As Eric had mentioned, we pull in the federal branch. They're under the umbrella of the USDA Department of Agriculture. They're called the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and they partner with us, and we basically help bring together the City of Burbank and the federal government to come up with really some hotspots and tough areas that may require some mitigation measures. The good thing is the federal government typically does reimburse 75% of the monies, and the local sponsor in this case would be the City of Burbank, would take care of the 25%. So that's the good news. The tough news is sometimes there's only 10 days or 20 days of a window of opportunity to get the work done. So the federal government has a short timeframe, so once the agreements are signed, there is a small window of opportunity. And so we really try to work together in harmony to get the most out of the monies Water Resources Division, which is one of the divisions in LA County Department of Public Works, which I work for, we are in charge of the debris flow forecasts. It's so important for us that we invited the National Weather Service to basically go on reconnaissance with us so that they could see the soil and terrain firsthand. Some of the folks there are geologists, and they were more than happy to accommodate us and join us on our reconnaissance, because when they issue, when the National Weather Service issues a forecast warning, it really puts us on high alert. And we are currently, right now, we have teams of engineers that are available 24/7 to the National Weather Service, seven days a week, 24, you know, hours a day. So we really have a lot of teamwork between the National Weather Service and ourselves. And also, we want to tell you that, you know, the safest alternative to any improvements to your property are sometimes to just evacuate, because you never can predict what Mother Nature can put in your direction, in your way, in your property. And then, of course, at the end, we'll get into some questions. I think the questions will be fielded by a couple of us, Eric. Flood Control District was established in 1915, and so it's been in place for, you know, over 100 years. And so basically, it's to protect, you know, life and property, and it was federally mandated, I should say, and that's why we exist. That's why we exist, and that's why I'm here. Flood Control District has a number of dams, and with these number of dams, it has many, many debris basins. The dams and reservoirs are very, very large, and for the City of Burbank, there's probably a handful of debris basins that are like mini dams in your city. And they're there put in place, thankfully, to offset and mitigate any potential flood debris flows, and they're also there to, you know, provide that extra safety, factor of safety, so that properties aren't severely impacted by debris flows and mud flows. To make the situation worse, when you have a burned hillside like currently right now, there is additional debris that can be produced. And so I think there is, the Flood Control District basically maintains the Flood Control District's debris basins 24/7. And we're really out there, and we have been out there for many, many different fires, the aftermath, and made ourselves available. There is 500 miles of open channel from the LA River, San Gabriel River, everything that feeds to those two major tributaries, and then some. So we've channelized a lot of the area to contain and to keep residents safe throughout LA County. And currently, right now, we have 20 active sediment placement sites. A sediment placement site is not a landfill. It's just to take dirt and debris, organic material, and start to basically create a space so that it could be placed in a safe area. Many people think that, oh, they're taking trash up there, it's rubbish. No, we're not taking any household waste. This is just organic material that comes out of the hillsides, engineered slopes that can be protected and maintained in these 20 active areas throughout Los Angeles County. This is a perimeter, and the map out there is basically a copy of this area, tremendous 7,000 acres of, you know, area that's enclosed there. These are the different maps that we've broken up the segment to, because this area is so large, it really wouldn't fit well on any one given map. So we've broken up Burbank into two different areas, and the other four maps there are for the City of Los Angeles. Anybody have any questions about the map or the perimeter or the fire? So we've identified the critical areas. There's so many canyons throughout the hillsides there. We've basically worked with the cities and asked, can we come into your community? And the City of Burbank has been very, very proactive and has allowed us to come to your properties, to your door, and basically offer advice. And we thoroughly thank the City of Burbank for that. Once we get to the individual properties, we're able to really see door to door, backyard, side yard, where the trouble spots are. This is a sample of, this is a Latuna Canyon. Our engineers try to hike up to the highest point that we can to get the best view to see if the perimeter is correct, and to also identify any properties down below that are, that could be directly impacted. There were times when we worked seven days a week, and, boy, it was quite a stretch from Labor Day weekend to about the first week of November. A lot of legwork. This is a sample of the Burn Canyon, and, you know, there's a community down there. There are single-family homes down there, and this area is so steep that, you know, we, the county, and of course, your city, were concerned. This is a great picture of La Cañada Station Fire. Ocean View Boulevard is, I would say, this area right here. Right along here, Ocean View Boulevard. There's a street over here called Malali. So I knocked on the door of this property owner, and I said, "Sir, ma'am, we think your property is in danger. There's a fresh fire up there, a station fire, as you know." And, you know, they said, "Thank you very much, but we don't need any." And, well, I left him my card, and this is the aftermath. I can't tell you how badly I felt for these folks, because they didn't take our time to, at least to evacuate. This is one of the debris basins currently right now. This is the aftermath of the fire, and it basically just takes out the entire vegetation. It's pretty bleak, and there's a lot of excessive debris that is coming down to this collection area here, and, you know, we're quite concerned. This is the side view, and there's a tower there. That tower in that debris basin is meant to de-water that back area there, and the water goes through those slots, and all the debris starts to collect in the back and dry out. It is very important that it dries out, because when it dries out, we get our crews in there with dump trucks, and we start scooping it out, putting it on the truck and hauling it off, and it'll go to one of the sediment placement sites, one of the 20 sites that I had mentioned earlier. If the flows get too high, there is a spillway notch there on the wall that the flows could adequately travel through in a controlled manner. This is the heart of a debris basin. Of course, we look for occupied structures, burned area, hillside, slopes, any flow path of water, any low flow could really become worse than you could ever imagine. Again, this is a canyon. There's some mountainous types of drainage, things that are fairly rural. All in all, Mother Nature overtakes these items here, and the water will do what it wants to do, and the mud and the debris. This is an area in Latuna Canyon. There's a school right below. This is very much on our radar, as with any other school, any hospital, any facility that has many people, or any first responder facility. We met with the federal government, and I introduced them to the school. The school's a private school, so I was able to probably visit this property at least five times, and the federal government was able to prescribe some measures. And now time is of the essence. This slide in here just shows you that every house is a little different. And this is a house of a fire that we had in Santa Clarita called the Sand Fire. And there's a river that literally runs through it. It's quite something, and some people really think, "Oh, that's kind of cute how this water just comes through this way, goes underneath this footbridge right here, and just kind of goes right by the house." For me, it's almost a trouble, I'm not going to say disaster, but you have to be careful each and every property. Please don't think that the stream is cute, because sometimes, at least one time in your life, this place and that garage has been hit and struck with debris and mud. Thankfully, the house, the front door, hasn't been impacted, but pretty darn close. So there's all different types of information that I have for you, and I'll open my, I'll answer as many questions as you want afterwards. I just want you to understand that the burn area maps are available. They are available online, and the information will tell you how many cubic yards of material. The county uses a cubic yard. It's like a stackable washing machine, washer and dryer. That's about a cubic yard, and so the quantities that you see on the maps aren't cubic yards. And sometimes there are a couple of hundred, sometimes there are a couple of thousand cubic yards. So a dump truck is typically a 10-yard cubic truck, a dump truck, and it's not always filled to the brim. So whenever you see a quantity of cubic yardage, just divide it by 10, and you'll have a good idea about how many dump trucks need to be back in that area to clear that out, to keep you from, you know, harm's way potentially. This is a really nice example of a burn area map. It basically spells out in detail all the areas that we would imagine along this community here that could be impacted, and all the points of interest along the freeway, along the residential areas here. And we've basically quantified this and said each and every single area, this is what you could expect. And so this value is in cubic yards, and, you know, please take the information so that you have the knowledge. And do evacuate if the first responders ask, or if you're on a reverse 911 system or a notification system. I think Eric had mentioned that there's a notification system that Burbank has. The county also has one. Please have some redundancy. Sign up for both, because on your smartphone, when you get that information, you'll know, hey, it's not only coming from one agency, it's coming from two. So it'll give you a little bit of peace of mind that, you know what, we better go this Here's a stackable washer/dryer or a fancy washing machine, that's about a cubic yard. So when we say, you know, a dump truck could probably hold about 10 of these. We have homeowners guides in the back that we provided. It has some good general information about sandbag placement, about some deflectors made out of timber, material that you could readily buy at the hardware store. Anything beyond that, we would recommend that you basically hire a contractor. So we're not trying to break the bank, but we're trying to provide you with money well-spent at a decent price, with measures that you could implement, or even have a handyman maybe do, even a landscaper. That is our goal. And as the county comes out and visits your property, we're not pushing a contractor, and we're not pushing a product. We want you to understand that there's no hidden agenda here. We're coming out to visit you because we care for your well-being. If we go to your property and we tell you that you need to deflect these flows, it's going to be because you could safely do it and you will not be impacting your next-door neighbor, your downstream neighbor. That's not always the case. And so therefore, there are cases when the best approach is just a defensive approach, and it's board up your windows and doors and evacuate, because there's no safe way that I could tell you that you could deflect your flows away from your property. It does happen. It has happened. We understand liability, and we understand that we cannot prescribe something that will be to the detriment of your neighbor. By the way, we always invite that you get a second opinion, and that what we offer and prescribe is purely up to you. There's no obligation. In the homeowner's guide, I would say, "Don't overfill your sandbags." And it doesn't have to be filled with sand. It can be filled with backyard material of rock and dirt. So, you know, don't overfill it, and have the top flop over a little bit so that you have a little extra. And then put it so that the direction of the flow won't open up the bag. And remember, this is just temporary. About every year or two, if it's exposed to direct sunlight, the bags will disintegrate. So, you know, keep that in mind. A more permanent measure would be something that you could remove, some posts and some planks, sometimes some plywood, depending on what kind of fences you have in your yard. This is an extreme example of sandbags, and, you know, they don't always work. I think this was a Kinaloa Fire, and this property owner put a tremendous amount of sandbags all the way. I can't tell you how arduous, and how much time and how much effort that took. Some people will do just about anything to protect their property, because it's, you know, it's where you live. There's times when maybe a galvanized pipe and planks could have probably taken care of this with less labor and fairly affordable material, but ultimately, you know, the choice is yours. By the way, we always ask, work with your city before you do any drilling. Work with your city so that you're not doing anything contrary to what the city codes are, because we, the county, understand and know, every city is a little different. And so some of the driveways that are very, very vulnerable to the flow have had these installed, these removable deflector sections. And so it really just depends, and I would say, check with your city first before you engage in this type of idea, to keep the flows from coming into the driveway and into your home or your garage. Now, this is kind of a semi-permanent measure, where they did a rock and mortar wall, and it's probably decorative. They might have some type of removable section here, but for peace of mind, they've added a plank. So after the recovery period of the water... So after the recovery period of the watershed, which is four to five years, they could remove this section and probably go with a more decorative type of look, maybe some wrought iron or some type of metal. So, you know, they've really kind of thought ahead of time and they're working with a great base because this is a good two feet. And most debris flows are going to be two to three feet. And I say most. It really depends, but for the most part, we model two to three feet of debris flow and that's about our max. This is an example of what we call rail and timber structures. Basically, they're wooden planks with spacing to allow, it's kind of like a sieve for your canyon that's burned. It allows the water to go through, but the mud and the rock to be held back. There are some of these structures throughout the perimeter, throughout the city of Burbank, throughout the cities of Los Angeles, and throughout the county. These are temporary fire measures. These are some of the measures that we prescribed currently and have prescribed in the past. This is just a plan view of a typical driveway section. I have a great photo of, it's called the Fish Fire in Duarte last year. They figured a way to connect wooden planks, just flush across. And I'm going to go back because I want to use that picture in the presentation. They fabricated some metal piece that they could slide into the K-rail that has already these loops in it, steel loops. And so by sliding these fabricated pieces of metal, they made it really simple to put some wood planks flush in this area here. And it was really done well. I will promise myself to bring that into the slides. You know your flood risk. When we come to your house and we have a packet of information, we have some FEMA flood information. We are not insurance people or salesmen or experts. But we want you, the community, to have as much information as you possibly can. Because, you know, nothing like being prepared. This is a good way to basically, don't forget, sign up for the city of Burbank's alert system. Sign up for the county's e-notification system. I want you to have a little redundancy. I can't stress that. Have a first aid kit, you know, radio. If you're one of the properties that is not directly impacted, but the flows are going to go down your street and there's going to be mud and rock that might take a day to clear, have extra food and water during this rainy season, just in case. You may not be able to leave home, or you may not be able to get home from work. This is a sheet of paper that has, this is an example. It has all the fires in the last five years of the county of any significance. And as the years go by, some of these fires fall off the list and new fires come on the list. And so this is just basically saying that from the National Weather Service, we get information from them roughly at 4:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And then any additional times that they see fit. So we could get two notifications a day, or we could get 20 notifications a day. Based on the National Weather Service, we will post these bulletins and they will be on our county website. And based on this information, the first responders will issue phase warnings or evacuations, if warranted. There's three phases. Basically, the maps are available and it's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light, just like a traffic signal. Phase one is a green color. Phase two is a yellow color. And of course, the heaviest, phase three is red. There are maps in the back table there that are color-coded so you can get a good idea of the extent of the projected mud flow footprint that we would anticipate. Again, sign up for the notification systems. Please take evacuation seriously. Don't try to cross any flooded areas because it only takes a couple of inches to knock you off your feet. If you see any downed power lines, please call 911. If you feel that your life is in danger, call 911. Online, we have a couple of websites. And of course, Eric mentioned that the city of Burbank has a website. Be in tune. My name up there. If you need any contact information, of course, you have my number now, 626-458-6164. And during non-emergency conditions, we are pretty much at the office Monday through Thursday. And if we do have storm operations, storms, we're pretty much on call just about seven days a week. There is a number I thought that was on here, it is 1-800-765-Help. There's always someone there 24/7 to take your call and direct that to the person who's available in charge at the county. It's a great number to have. Anytime, 24/7. All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
So now we're going to go ahead and segue into our own City Public Works to give a little bit about what they've been doing to prepare and get ready for the rain as well. So I'm going to bring up John to speak about our own City Public Works.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you all for coming tonight. I just wanted to say the Burbank Public Works Department is ready for the storm season. Our debris basins have been cleared and they're ready to receive runoff. We have filled sandbags available at our Public Works Yard. It's located at 124 South Lake Street. Anybody who has an engineer report from Los Angeles County Public Works can have 50 sandbags. They're already filled. Anybody else can have 25, as long as they prove their residency. If you need more sandbags, there's empty sandbags available at Fire Station 16 located at 1600 North Bel Air Drive. And sand is available at Brace Park at 2901 Haven Way. Everybody knows where those are, I'm sure. We have received 7,600 linear feet of K-rail from the city of Glendora. From their Colby Fire burn area, they were done with it, their phases were over with. And we have received that, is now being brought in this week to our landfill. And we will be deploying that as needed. There's a couple of water tanks up there that the National Resources Conservation Service said that needed protection and we will be deploying it there. But as far as any other deployments, we will hold that until we think we need it in a certain street or something. Trash collection days may be changed on some of your streets based upon, you know, flows coming down. We will tell you, please don't put out your trash can. We don't need them at the bottom of the hill. So if that happens, we'll try to get ahold of everybody, let them know. You know, it'll be a later date and we'll be coming and just flood your street with our trucks and just get it all taken care of. Our job in this effort is to protect you and make sure you all are able to move about and do everything you need to do. And just in closing, this is very quick, but I'd like to thank the Los Angeles County Public Works Department, the National Resources Conservation Service, and the city of Glendora for helping us so much. Really quick, but that's pretty much it.
So we have one more presentation and then I will give a wrap-up with some of the preparedness stuff, some of the stuff that Mike and Miranda already talked about, but I'll give you some more preparedness information from the city. And then we'll open it up to questions and answers and the panel will come up here for you. So our last presenter is going to be from our Community Development Department from Building and Safety. So Carol Ann, I'm going to turn it over to you for a couple minutes.
Thank you, Eric. Hi, everyone. My name is Carol Ann Coats. I'm from Building Division of the Community Development Department. And with me tonight, we have a couple of our other staff in CDD. Russell Friesland, who is one of our senior plan check engineers, and he's an architect. And also our city planner, Fred Ramirez, and deputy city planner. So we're here tonight because we want to help you with your questions about building permits and what permits might be needed. Most of the diversionary measures that you might be considering do not need permits, like such things as sandbags, plastic sheeting, wrapping doors and windows. A couple of things, however, do need permits and those would be low retaining walls or retaining walls over four feet and block walls over seven feet. And many of those will need engineering and engineered drawings as well. We are going to expedite the plan check of those, which will enable you to start building them right away. So we will expedite those in 48 to 72 hours. Hillside development permit might be needed for certain things. And our planning staff can help with those questions. We do have a handout that we provided for you in the back that on the back of the handout lists some of the measures that need permits and what does and does not need permits. We also have our business cards with us, so we're going to be answering your questions after this. And we have our business cards, so you're welcome to, you know, please call us if you have any questions, if you're not sure what needs a permit. Or you can visit us at the Permit Center, which is on the first floor of the Community Services Building. And we're happy to help you answer any questions you might have. And that's all I have to say at this moment. And I'll give this back to Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things I want to point out with the expedited services and also the pre-filled sandbag stuff, I don't want you to go and be given the runaround to make sure that if you go to get any of the expedited services or something like that, make sure that you have that form that LA County Public Works gave you. Because that's actually your ticket to actually show that you have an immediate need for those resources. So if you do need to have a plan check done, make sure you do bring that form with you. That is something that's going to actually show that you're one of the identified residents. If you're not somebody who has one of those forms, then it's a case-by-case basis to see if we'll be able to expedite your services for that. So real quick, I'm not here to scare you, I'm here to show you that this is a real threat and to make sure that you do take the proper precautions to prepare. So this is just a couple of photos specifically above Burbank, so you can see what we're facing. So this is the Haven Debris Basin and directly above that. You can see already we have some dry slide occurring above the debris basin. This is the Stow Nature Center road. This also has a bunch of dry slide areas there, so without any storms, we already have dry slides taking place. Again, above the Stow Nature Center, you can see how denuded the hillside is. Pretty much all of it is gone. Again, above Stow Nature Center. Above Haven Debris Basin, so above Haven Way, this area also is pretty cleaned out. And this is above Brace. So again, above Brace, same thing. It's fairly denuded all the way down with very little vegetation left. It gives a different perspective because I've had a lot of people say it doesn't look that bad from down in the neighborhood. But when you go up on top of the ridge and you're looking down, it gives a whole different perspective of how denuded the hillside actually really is. So one of the things that we face in Burbank is we've got some of the steepest terrain out of the area that was burned by the Latuna Fire. So as you see here, this is the entire burn perimeter of the Latuna Fire. The yellow, orange, and red that you see indicated is based on the degree of angle of slope of the different hillsides. So if you look at the Burbank area specifically, that's where most of the yellow, orange, and red lies. We have the steepest terrain of this burn area. So this gives you a better idea. This just zooms in on the Burbank area, specifically right around the golf course. You can see how steep and everything our terrain is. So we face some of the more severe flows if they do actually occur. This is a 3D topo of the different watersheds, so above Brace. So the areas in red are of the greatest concern. This is the watersheds all along Burbank, from one end of the city to the other. And this is Sunset and Deer Canyon, which is above Country Club Drive. Wildwood Canyon and Stow Canyon. So some additional information for you to prepare. So if your property was identified by LA County Public Works, follow the mitigation advice that was given to you. Don't wait. Don't do like Mike had pointed out where that one person was like, oh, thank you, but we don't really need it. And you saw the photo of what happened afterwards. These are qualified engineers, they've come out, they've given you an expert opinion. We highly recommend that you follow their advice. Check of permits are required for the work that you plan to implement. Make sure you don't cause problems for others. So if you're going to go out there and do something that wasn't advice that was given to you by LA County Public Works, before you implement your own strategy, please make sure that it's not going to affect your downstream neighbors. Last thing we want to do is have you in a position where it's a liability on yourself because you've caused damage to somebody else's property, but also for the fact that it might cause a public safety concern to the downstream neighbors. Maintain any efforts that you do take. As Mike pointed out, some of the things with the sandbags, they will start to deteriorate after a couple of seasons out there. So they will start to deteriorate and you won't have any protection left from that. Also, maintain any of your wood timber if you're doing any of that type of structure. Start your preparedness efforts early. Don't wait for the actual rain to come. When the rain hits, that's not the time that you want to be out there trying to fill sandbags and place sandbags on your property. Now is the time to go ahead and start doing that or start looking at what can you do around your property. Parking restrictions or road closures may be put in place as necessary. So depending on the severity of the storm, we may have to do road closures or detours around certain neighborhoods that we do fear that there will be flows, or have to actually do hard closures of certain streets. As John had pointed out, sand and sandbags will be made available. Debris removal, if necessary, will be done in an orderly manner. So what we'll be able to do from a city's point of view is to remove debris from the public right-of-way. So any debris that actually collects on your own property as property owners or residents, it is still your responsibility to actually take that off of your property and take it out to the city street right-of-way. We can't come and remove debris from your private property. So we can't operate on your private property. So if you do get mud on your property, one of the things the city will do is we'll organize days that we will come around to the certain neighborhoods. As long as you've put the mud out to the street, the debris out on the street, we'll come around with front-end loaders and trucks and we'll actually collect it from the street. Sign up for Burbank Community Alerts. So I'm going to give you a couple of different places here. So Burbank Community Alerts is our version of a reverse 911 system. So with today's technology, with everybody having, either using cell phones or voice-over-internet phone products, you have to actually opt-in to receive these alerts. We can't force an alert on you if you haven't registered your phone. So we highly encourage you to sign up for the Burbank Community Alerts. Again, this is our version of a reverse 911 system. This is where we'll actually send you information if we do feel that there is a public safety or imminent threat to the neighborhood and if we're going to issue evacuations to your area. We've already started to pre-populate those different phases into our system. So at a push of a button, we can actually activate these alerts to those neighborhoods based on the residents that have identified their phone numbers in those different phases. So it only works if you sign up for it. So you can sign up for Burbank Community Alerts at readyburbank.org. At readyburbank.org, there's a big banner on the front page. You can click on that. It'll take you directly to a page where you can register your address and phone number. Sign up for LA County Public Works e- notify system. This is slightly different. So for their e- notify system, you can go in and it's going to give you different categories once you create an account to actually get notified for. The one that I suggest you do is the debris and mud flows. So anytime that they see that there's a weather forecast that's going to cause those phase alerts that are going to trigger debris or mud flows in those areas or of concern, they will send out an e-notification to you and that will let you know that there's a potential. So that at least gives you a heads-up to start preparing or that there is a potential for these different mud or debris flows to affect your neighborhood. One other thing that they have with that is their mud flow forecast. So when you get the e- notify, you can actually go to the mud flow forecast, which Mike showed up there. And with the mud flow forecast, you can see if the Latuna Fire burn area is specifically identified. The storm may be impacting up north further, and so it might only be areas in the Santa Clarita Valley. It may be down further south. So when you get one of those e- notify alerts, it's for the entire county that they do have phase alerts going on. But if you go to the mud forecast, you'll be able to see, is the Latuna burn area one of the specifically identified areas? And you can sign up for both those. We made it easy if you go to readyburbank.org/Latuna. Again, we've put links to both the mud forecast and to the LA County Public Works e- notify system, so you can register there as well. So we're trying to give you one-stop shop. So we're trying to give you one-stop shop. If you go to Ready Burbank, you'll be able to find all this information. If you forget the slash latuna, no big deal, if you just go to Ready Burbank, lower right-hand side, we have a link that takes you directly to the Latuna page. And visit readyburbank.org/latuna often for updated information. As we get more mitigation advice or other information that we can share with you, it'll be posted on that specific website for this purpose. So please check back often because the information will change as we get updated information. And with that, I'm going to invite everybody that spoke to come up and we'll go ahead and take and entertain any questions that you might have. Just one second, as soon as I get the panel all situated up here?
Want to talk about the gate?
No. So once I get the panel all situated, we'll go ahead and you can raise your hand. Chief Garcia will come around with the microphone and you'll go ahead and be able to ask your question. So if you have any questions, please raise your hand. Like I said, Chief Garcia will come around and we'll try to answer your questions best we can.
Yes, Mike, if we called this number that you gave us, someone will come out and check over our property?
Absolutely. We have at our disposal many engineers and technicians and when a group of engineers comes out, there's always an engineer who's registered in the state of California as the lead to come to your properties. Typically, the hours are from nine to two, sometimes three, but generally it could be as early as eight, but trying to get out to your location, it's not always that easy with morning traffic, so generally it's usually nine to two, nine to three. And many, many times, we can tell just by your address that it will not be impacted and we'll let you know. But if we do see a need, we will definitely come in and listen.
And the number 626-458-6164?
458-6164. Correct. Yes, in the back?
On the reverse 911, we live on Country Club and not all the cellphones there get service there, you know, because there just aren't towers. So will you still be doing the reverse 911 on the landline for those?
If you have a landline number registered, it will go to any phone numbers that you actually have registered. So you can actually register multiple phone numbers as well as email addresses and specific SMS devices as well. So any number that you put on the system and register, yes, it will send the message too. The only difference being is that you will only get the voice-recorded message where a cellphone will get both the voice-recorded message as well as a text message simultaneously.
I have a question on the sandbag availability where you said if your area is affected, you can have up to 50 sandbags that we can come and pick up. Do you have to pick up all 50 sandbags at one trip or is there a checkoff where you'll say, "Okay, you've got 10, you can come back and get, you know, another 10"? How is that going to work?
We keep a tally and we will let you take 10 at a time or whatever you need to to make sure you do what you need.
Thanks.
It was said that the debris basins have all been cleared out now. What about the project at the top of Country Club Drive, a bracing that debris basin? Has that been finished or has it even started?
Yes, I think I can answer that. Department of Public Works is undergoing what we call as an emergency project to heighten the dam to provide more greater capacity for the protection of the residents downstream or along Country Club Drive. The contractor moved in on Monday and assuming that we have clear weather, we anticipate that it would finish in January. However, if the weather does turn, we could prolong the emergency project.
Thank you.
We live on Brace Canyon and our properties go up the hill and back of us for a very short space. And we're responsible for all the mud that's coming into our property, yet the land where the mud is coming from is privately owned. What is their responsibility to protect our property because it wasn't our fault that the mud came into our places?
Unfortunately, if it's private property above your address, it becomes a civil matter if they're not taking measures to protect your property or to prevent damage to other people's property. Unfortunately, we have no authority to compel them to do something on their property unless it becomes a true public safety hazard. And if it's just going to be the mud that's coming down on your property, unfortunately, that becomes a civil dispute.
Mr. Miranda, you said that you knocked on like about 560 doors?
Yes, that is correct.
So does that identify, so the residents, do they know they're identified residents that they're susceptible to mud flows?
Yes. Typically, what we do is we have a packet of information and I have an example on my desk, sorry, at the desk in front here, that has all the information about sandbags, the homeowner's guide, the letter of why we're there in the first place, my business card typically, and the insurance background information. A quick summary of, you know, how, what your experience was when we came out to your property. We try to really keep the quality control and the experiences as beneficial as possible. So the answer to your question is that we do leave information at the doorstep. We are not allowed to put the information in a mailbox because that is in defense of federal rules.
So if they're not here, they know they're in a potential mud flow?
Yes, typically, you know, and their neighbors usually tell them, "Oh, you know, you can't visit my neighbor and, you know, I want you to come take a look at my property." And that's fairly typical. Yes.
Moving sandbags is not an easy thing. Is it, city can do any deliveries to some of these areas?
No, you need to come to pick them up at the Public Works yard or go fill them up at the park.
And then one more question on the length of time. I know the plants have just been utterly destroyed, some are starting to pop up, but it sounds like this is going to be something we're going to be dealing with for four to five years?
Yeah, three to five years is the typical number.
Yeah, typically, it takes three to five years for a denuded area watershed to come back to at least be enough to sustain not having the debris flows. There is some vegetation already starting to grow. I was up there with some of our PIO folks as well and there is some of the green starting to come back, it's some of the actual sumac and sage that's starting to grow back up there. However, there's not going to be enough ground cover in the next two years to, so we're looking at at least the first two winters are going to be significant.
In the 78 fire, they actually flew helicopters and dropped seed. Are they looking at doing anything like that again?
No, so we actually had studies come out, we actually had the US Department of Agriculture come out and they've taken a look at everything and actually all the studies show that hydroseeding, that type of terrain, you need to do it in a certain time of year for one. At this time of year, it's not conducive because the way our storms actually come in, so hydroseeding works better in areas where you get progressive rain and in California, especially Southern California, we don't, we get periods of no rain and then a pretty good downpour. We don't get the progressive rain and anytime that you get that, it just washes the seed away. Another detriment that we have to our hillside is that we have very shallow soil, we have bedrock just a couple of feet underneath and so for the type of hydroseeding to take place, there's not enough soil for it to actually grab and grab hold of. So natural native vegetation is the best erosion control.
Thank you.
I understand that you guys are not insurance expert, but I'll still ask my question hoping to get some information. What I read was generally that the flood insurance does not really cover mud flows, it covers flow of water which is muddy, but not mud flows or debris flows. Is that correct first of all? And then secondly, my question is, what kind of insurance would cover mud flow or debris flow?
So the National Flood Protection Insurance Program, which is administered by FEMA, there's actually different levels to it. So it's actually administered by FEMA, but you go through a regular insurance broker, but not all insurance brokers are qualified to be FEMA flood insurance carriers. So when you look at it, yes, the typical flood insurance program does only cover water intrusion, including muddy water. However, there are some policies that will cover land shift is what you're looking for, land shift or land movement, and you actually need to speak to the agent to ensure that the policy covers something like that.
I'm interested in comment on the article that was in the Los Angeles Times about taking wind into the factor of predicting fires. That was in the Friday, November 24th, and it also talked about putting utilities underground. How, is that too far in the future to even consider? Is it a consideration at all? I just found the article very interesting and the headline was "Fire Policies: Side-Step Key Factor, Wind."
So that really is because of the fires that happened in Northern California, because it happened because of downed utility lines. This fire was not caused by downed utility lines and as a matter of fact, we have very few fires in Southern California that are caused by downed utility lines because of the way the system is designed. PG&E in Northern California uses a different type of grid system than Southern California Edison or local utilities do and it left an open circuit up there. There was also a third-party provider that also had liability up there. The fire here was not caused by a utility system and in some areas, especially on the hillside, trying to do underground utilities to the homes that are already up there, because these are legacy-type homes in some of the neighborhoods, it's too hard to go in and retrofit them on the hillside slopes. It's easier to go in and retrofit the neighborhoods like on the valley, but up there, because of some of the terrain and stuff, it's just not conducive to get power into some of the areas going underground. So the wind having a factor in that, it really isn't an issue in this fire itself. So I hope that answers your question.
Can you tell us what the cause was of the Latuna Fire?
So the cause is undetermined as human-caused, but the actual cause itself is undetermined. So it is a human-caused fire. The nature of the fire was actually right off the edge of the 210 freeway, so it could have been many of different factors that actually are human-caused factors. Could have been a cigarette thrown from a window, it was a holiday weekend, it could have been trailer chains on somebody's RV or boat trailer that were dragging and caused a spark. It could have been anything like that that caused this fire.
What about the Hamline Fire?
The Hamline Fire, Chief Garcia, is that still an investigation or do we have a cause that we have for public dissemination?
I'm not certain on that one as well.
So the Hamline Fire, I know it was under investigation with our arson investigator, so I'm not sure what the disposition was on that yet.
Yes, I have two questions. I live in the Burbank Hills area. Mike, if nobody came to our door or left anything on our porch, can we assume that our home is not under danger at the moment?
You know, it would be an assumption, but in order to avoid that guessing work, I'd rather you call me and I could verify your address along the perimeter and the interior. We have available to the first responders only some maps that have extremely high detail and are for evacuation purposes only. So if you give me your address, I'll be able to look at literally the rooftop of your property and see if the footprint is anywhere near your property. And if it's not, then it's just going to be one of maybe coming and going or ingress-egress. And if it is, we'll be more than happy to go out there and pay you a visit.
Okay, great. And because so much of our back, we live along the hillside, so much of the land there is part of the Homeowners Association. Has there been an agreement or an understanding with whose responsibility it is to shore up these hills?
So I've been out in the Estates area and visited with several of the property owners that have had that same concern. So for most part, it's roughly 250 feet beyond your individual property line is still owned and maintained by the HOA. So any of that is still like, was asked earlier, private property? And so that again would become a civil issue if they don't do anything, but you do have civil recourse because that is private property that the HOA has been made aware of that is going to be a concern to your property. So it becomes a civil issue and again, because you're part of the HOA, you're paying into the HOA dues, that's something that you might want to actually talk about at your next HOA meeting about that because it makes absolutely no sense for you basically to sue yourself because you're paying into that same fund. So it's better to mitigate the problem before it actually becomes a problem. And that's the advice that I've given out there as well.
And lastly, is there, you didn't speak about stability, slope stability on hillsides that do have, still have growth on them, but are they in danger as well? Is there a danger from loosening or because the irrigation lines have been burned?
If the area is unburned, it would be fairly typical of any other year that you have experienced living there. It would be typical drainage patterns. If you had problem spots before with maybe a garage getting water and moisture in there, it's going to continue. I wouldn't think that it would be any worse, but you did mention that if the irrigation lines do get ruptured and are not available, then typically over time, it could dry out. But I would say for the most part, it would remain the same as any other non-burned year.
One more quick question. Is history a good predictor? Our property was affected by the 1978 fire that came through and our side of the street, I'm sorry to say it Greg, but our side of the street really didn't have the mud flows that the other side of the street did. So can we kind of knock on wood and say probably this year, if we didn't have a lot of mudslides in 78, we probably won't this year because there's more rock versus the dirt on top or is that foolish?
History is a great predictor. The Colby Fire was really good for us. It was in Glendora and in the late 60s, it made the National Geographic Magazine layout tremendous amount of mud flow. We use that footprint a lot to predict where our model was taken last four, five years ago. So yes, history is a great predictor and many, unfortunately, a lot of people don't always live in their home for a long period of time. So that new person has no idea that that house was slammed or that that house was really okay and it was just more of a nuisance of coming and going from their property. I would say if you know that your property has been impacted before, I would say it's going to happen again, especially in this burn. This burn is very complete. There's, I would say even the, was it the Harvard Fire in 1980-ish, that that was a partial burn and this is a more complete burn.
So one thing I want to point out with that-
years ago. So yes, history is a great predictor, and many, unfortunately, a lot of people don't always live in their home for a long period of time, and so that new person has no idea that that house was slammed, or that that house was really okay, and it was just more of a nuisance of coming and going from their property. I would say, if you know that your property has been impacted before, I would say it's going to happen again, especially in this burn. This burn is very complete. There's, I would say, even the, was it the Harvard Fire, 1980-ish, that that was a partial burn, and this is a more complete burn.
Thank you.
So, one thing I want to point out with that, so history is a great predictor. So the Harvard Fire was 2005, and we've had a lot of people who have said, well, we didn't have much happen from the Harvard Fire. Like Mike said, the Harvard Fire did not burn nearly as clean or as full as this did, but also using that history as a predictor from 78, I don't know what the terrain looked like above your home at that time, so if your area did not get impacted in 78, I don't know if there was more vegetation still above your home at that time. So, as Mike said, if it's, if you were impacted, you're probably still going to be impacted. But if you weren't impacted in 78, I don't know the historical connotation of what the hillside looked like above your home at that time. If it wasn't a clean burn, if there was still unburnt vegetation, or there was still any type of root structure up there at that time, you may not have had as much impact then that you might have this year.
Also, I'd like to add, that's why we come to your door, so that you could allow us to the rear of the property, or the side of the property, so that we could really make a fresh assessment, because we do not want to overlook a piece of property, just because it was okay in the past, because every, you know, every perimeter is going to be a little unique.
Quick question, when the 78 fire came down, I've got over 400 sandbags already in the backyard, and we ran it down the run, now, using water, back then, we weren't in a drought. Now, trying to push the mud out using water, is it going to hike up the bills, or water bill, or everything like that, or, I mean, are they going to be accessible to, hey, you're in a burn system, or area, you need to use that to push the mud out? And I'm just, I don't know, what city, who would I talk to on that one, kind of thing? I mean, as if water comes to a rate?
If you place 400 sandbags, that's fairly significant, just like that one slide that I showed for the Kinalo Fire. What I have experienced before is, that many sandbags sometimes will become debris themselves, because a sandbag is not really a structural member, and given the right circumstance, more of a direct impact, the sandbags may tear apart and actually become a problem for your property, your swimming pool, your home.
It's part of the swimming pool, for the most part, directly.
Yeah, and I would say that probably, for the next four to five years, you might think of a different approach. The homeowner's guide does have a couple of different pictures.
I've got both side boards against the back retaining wall.
Good. Boards are good.
Then you've got sandbags here, plastic up on the hill, stake down, but this is just a fifth wall.
Yeah.
In case.
You know, my question would be, is, if the flows go where you want them to go, are they going to impact your neighbor?
No, it's going up above, you know, it shouldn't impact his house.
Then, you know, I'd say, you, it looks like you're pretty hands-on, and you've tried to really offset the risk.
Going to drain the pools, another debris basin?
Well, you know, typically, I wouldn't say drain the pool, only because sometimes pools pop.
Our pool guy said, no, it's so cured after 40 years.
Sure. You know, I can't tell you yes or no, but if you have advice to the, you know, one way or the other?
Correct.
But I would say, 400 sandbags is an awful lot, and, you know, we never, the county never prescribes anything over four feet, and typically, it's going to be...
Well, it's just the long, it's 300 feet, 300 feet that way.
And typically, it's two to three feet of temporary planks?
Right.
That you could get at the hardware store?
I can get your name, treated plywood up the back wall.
But...
Two eight foot long, three foot.
But do prepare to evacuate if you are on the evacuation list, okay? Because, again, this is, mud flow is not something that is easy to predict, nor are storms intensities. It's not only how many inches fall over a certain period of time, but it's that intensity of how many inches per hour. The National Weather Service really starts to open their alert system when you get to half an inch per hour. When you get to that threshold, then we really start to open up the emergency center, and possibly even, you know, come up with multiple forecasts.
This has sort of maybe just been answered with what you were just saying. We're on Country Club, which is a dead-end street. Is there any poss, do you have any idea of the timeframe? If you were to close a street, how much warning we might have, and is there any possibility, actually, with work that they're doing to change the debris basin, they said they might now allow parking on the street, which we have to do. Would there be any sort of transport? Would we be able to walk up and down if it gets closed because of a danger? I mean, I wouldn't want to walk up when there's a flood, obviously, but I'm just wondering what timeframe we might be dealing with, or if that's impossible.
So that's a good question. So, those of you who live on Country Club, I'm going to probably be the person that's going to be the person you hate the most right now. Unfortunately, there are going to be no parking restrictions that are going to be enforced as towaway zones on Country Club Drive. That decision's already been made. We're still working on the trigger points, and how that's going to be disseminated, and how the information will be brought out to you. But one of the trigger points, or the way that we are going to determine if Country Club becomes a no-parking zone, is going to be the phase alerts. So we are going to put out information to all the homeowners, again, door-to-door, letting you know that you need to register for the e-notify program. You will get a notification from LA County Public Works that there is a phase alert, and you'll need to check to see if the Latuna Burn Area is in effect. If the Latuna Burn Area is in effect as a phase alert, Country Club Drive above Via Montaña, above the debris basin, will all be no parking on the street. And the reason being is, we have had past debris flows and past things that have picked up cars and moved them downstream, and then we can't get the equipment in to actually clear out the street. So once it becomes a no-parking area, you'll either have to park off the street, if you've got space, or make arrangements to park down the hill somewhere. If we have not evacuated the neighborhood, you can still walk in and out, because the phase alert might be in place, but there's no rain yet. However, once it starts raining, I do not recommend to anyone to walk up or down Country Club Drive, because Country Club Drive becomes the actual flood control channel, and that water can come down at a moment's notice without any warning. You could be already out of your house, halfway walking down, and it's like going to be a flash flood type scenario. So, again, Country Club Drive will have towaway restrictions, and I wouldn't walk up and down the street.
So how long, how long would those towaway restrictions be in effect? I mean, like, we've been through having this sort of thing happen, and like, a few years back, there was a big cloud burst, just came really fast, so that's what I was wondering about the timeframe. But then, once it's over, it's over. If the street is clear enough, would it be like an hour, a day, two days?
So the towaway restriction will be enforced as long as the mud flow prediction is still in effect. So you'll be able to check, again, on Ready Burbank, we have the link directly to the county's website, that shows that mud forecast, as long as the mud forecast shows the Latuna Canyon Fire is still in effect, and they update that daily. I think, actually, you update it multiple times during the day, during the day, as it changes.
And many times as necessary.
So you'll be able to monitor that consistently. So as long as they lift it, then the towaway is lifted.
Mike, this is first for you again, about the Glendora, you've got K rails from Glendora, right?
I understand that that is the case.
Now, going back there, are they just going to do it as it needs to be, you know, not just going to place them in streets at any time? They're just going to, in case, you know, if it does start to happen, okay, we'll put K rails up in the streets?
So as of right now, none of the reports or modeling that we have from any of the agencies show the need for K rail placement in neighborhoods like the Colby Fire. The only placement areas that have been identified are to protect some of our critical infrastructure, some of our potable water tanks up above some of the debris basins, that are up there for the potable water for the neighborhood. So right now, that's the only place we are deploying K rail initially. However, we do have the additional stockpile in our possession, and although the modeling dictates one thing, if we see other after we start to see the rain, then we will deploy K rail as necessary to protect homes.
Years ago, many, many years ago, there was no parking on Country Club Drive. You couldn't park on Country Club Drive. Then somebody, somebody moved in, and they didn't know that, and they got it changed.
Unfortunately, I don't control that side of things. If you would like to go back to no parking, that's something that you might want to take up with council, and with the police department, with the traffic division. Unfortunately, all I can say is, during a storm event, we will be implementing a no-parking, towaway-enforced restriction on that street.
As a matter of fact, a car flowed down the street, and into a house.
And that's why we are going to enforce, it, this isn't going to be a, you get a ticket...
Three yards down from me, right into the house.
Right, this isn't going to be, you get a ticket. Burbank PD is already aware of the strategy, and this becomes a towaway-enforced no-parking area, as soon as that mud forecast indicates the Latuna Fire burn area.
Are there going to be any other streets with that, or just that street?
So far, that's the only street we have identified that we have to put a no-parking restriction in as of now. However, if we see concerns or problems on any other streets, then we may have to implement no-parking restrictions there as well. As of right now, the way Country Club Drive is designed, it is the flood control channel. And unfortunately, it only takes a couple inches of fast-flowing water to actually lift a mid-sized sedan and float it down the street.
Are there any maps that show the severity of, or danger, that we can access?
Yes, the county has published maps that are available, and a hard copy of those two maps are in the back table. The maps for this fire were six in total, but only two of the six were in Burbank, the other four in the city of Los Angeles. And so, it would show you color-coded of where we anticipate you would have debris flow, mud flow.
We'll try to get links to those maps up on our Ready Burbank site as well. Are there any other questions? Seeing no other questions, I thank you for taking the time out of your schedule to come and listen to what we had to offer, and I hope that you take the information that we provided to heart, and you actually do implement these strategies if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
[applause][1787.63]